He just had his baby. He's not coming either.
Oh, okay.
Oh.
Do you want to grab the, do you want to take it down then? He's not coming.
He just, his baby's like two days old.
Okay. Okay, okay.
What's going on?
All set? All right, we're going to call to order the Town and Niskiuna Planning Board and Zoning Commission, April 7th, 2025 meeting. Ms. Brigami, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Laflamme.
Here.
Mr. Khan.
Here.
Ms. Belofsky.
Here.
Ms. Gomes.
Here.
Ms. Gold.
Present.
Chairman Darpino.
Here. Okay, next up is approval of the minutes. We do not have any current minutes to review. Uh, we also do not have any public hearings, so we'll move directly to privilege of the floor. Privilege of the floor is now open to any resident of Niskiuna that would like to speak about any planning or zoning matter. Please approach the podium and state your name and address for the record. Okay, anyone here for privilege of the floor? All right, no one present? Laura, do we have any correspondents or anyone online?
No online attendees tonight, um, and no emails.
Okay. All right, last call for privilege of the floor. Okay, seeing as none will close privilege of the floor. There is no unfinished business, so we'll move on to new business. First up is Resolution 2025-10, a resolution for site plan approval for tenant change to Orange Wine and Spirits at 432 Balltown Road. Now therefore, be it hereby resolved that the Planning Board and Zoning Commission has determined that the following proposed waivers as described below are acceptable for this building and would have a minimum negative effect on the aesthetics of the plaza. One, a 42.7 square foot facade sign waiver for an Orange Wine and Spirits facade sign. And be it further resolved that the Planning Board and Zoning Commission finds the above referenced site plan meets the requirements of the zoning code and previous site plan approvals, and therefore hereby approves the site plan and signage waivers as described in the above resolution with the following conditions. One, prior to issuance of a final certificate of occupancy, a crosswalk shall be completed with a walk path and crosswalk signage. B, the three adjacent landscaping beds shall be refurbished according to the planting guidelines of the Niskiuna Tree Council. Ms. Gold is a project lead. Could I get a motion?
Aye, so move.
And a second?
A second chairman?
Second by Mr. Laflamme. Open it up to discussion. Do we have a representative from the applicant here?
Hello.
Hello?
Good evening. My name is Nirvindar Singh. Do I have to, uh, speak anything? I don't know.
Um, no, we just want to recap. Uh, you heard the conditions that were on the resolution. Are you comfortable with those items that are proposed? You're requesting the waiver for the signage and also the enhancements to the crosswalk and the planting beds.
Yes, we are fine with those.
Okay.
Yes.
Very good. Ms. Gold?
I don't see any problems. I think the waiver is justified. As things stand, it's really very small compared to its neighbor. Actually, small compared to one and very small compared to the one on the left. And I don't think it's going to be a problem of any sort. Use is appropriate, consistent with the zoning.
Okay. Like we'd recap before, we talked about the signage. We also made it known that the entire facade does have a demising wall in there. That's why it is justified to the right. Burlington Coat Factory, the other tenant, does take up some of that tenant space on the one side. Therefore, it is a little asymmetrical on that facade, but depending on if that ever gets subdivided again, there's potential for area of signage to be used for another tenant in the future.
Right.
Okay. Okay, any other discussion items? Okay, Ms. Brigami, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Laflamme.
Aye.
Mr. Khan.
Aye.
Ms. Belofsky.
Aye.
Ms. Gomes.
Aye.
Ms. Gold.
Aye.
Chairman Darpino.
Aye. Resolution has passed. Congratulations.
Thank you guys. Appreciate it.
Hope you have a good, successful business in the plaza.
For sending us to the community. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, moving on to the next thing. Uh, we have an update. The recommendation for the ZBA to 929 Pierce Road has been withdrawn by the applicant. So that is not on tonight's agenda. Is there any questions on that?
Yeah, and it's, it's not actually scheduled for the zoning board either. It was my, it was my mistake. I got the Pierce Road and the Fillmore Ave projects mixed up. So we currently do not, so where the project stands is that 929 Pierce Road's sketch plan was disapproved by the planning board. It has not, um, issued an application to the zoning board at this point, and no recommendation from the zoning board is needed at this time. We did talk to the applicant today because we were reminding them to come to the meeting, and, um, they said that they haven't decided what their next steps are.
Thank you for the update. Okay, moving on to discussion items. First up is 2690 Balltown Road, GE Vernova, site plan application for a new guardhouse and a new patio. Project leads are Ms. Belofsky and myself, and, uh, representative from the applicant here.
Thank you for having me again. Matt Savoy, GE Vernova Facilities.
Uh, just to give the board a quick update since the last meeting, I believe the CAC had a meeting on April 12th, had some, uh, updates from that. And also, in this package were several really good renderings of the outdoor space and some additional information that supported the original application. Go ahead.
So I was really just here to, you know, give an update on kind of where we're at. And then, again, feel any questions, anything I can't answer today, I'll definitely take a note of and get back with you. First off, appreciate the site visit from the two board members that were able to come down to site. Um, and then Laura, appreciate you joining us as well. Um, hopefully it was a good visit. Again, looking forward to any, any feedback you guys have. Um, we did present at the Tree Council, or excuse me, the CAC last week, um, on the, on the meeting. Um, took down a couple of notes, a couple of things to look at there. Those are already with the landscape architects to, to look at, um, specifically around some recommended, um, I'll call it low foliage, uh, to potentially plant in some of those areas. But overall, the, the design continues to progress. I think with what we've shown you guys, I just asked Laura to have the presentation available that way. If there are any questions, sometimes it's easier to flip to a visual than try to explain it, so.
So at the last planning board meeting, we did give a recap of our site visit. We explained, you know, basically how the whole campus is being transformed, you know, what's going on with the, you know, 1960s brick building, the facade updates, the interior, uh, breakaway rooms that you described, uh, the DAC building, which is, you know, well under construction, and how everything relates. Uh, the position of the guard shack, I think, when, when you talked to the CAC, did they have any concerns about that location? It seemed to be a relatively good idea for the placement, and then the looping parking area for anyone that needs to turn around in that area?
Yeah, so, and correct me if, if, you know, you guys heard anything differently, but I didn't hear anything from the discussion last week, concerns around the guard shack, again, just over 1,700, uh, feet inward of Balltown Road there. You know, we talked a little bit about, you know, the limits of disturbance and, and the, you know, additional plantings in that area, obviously accompanied by a full SWIP, which is, that one specifically is being designed by CTML.
Okay. Yeah, there's the guard shack.
Yep, yes, sir.
Yeah, and then just an update on the SWIP. Um, GE sent a checkover for the town designated engineer. Um, and they, I believe, were given the green light, or they will be tomorrow, um, to review the SWIP and then get all the engineering in order. And just, um, ping that engineering back to CAC for a final recommendation to you guys. And then, I mean, I think we'd probably be looking at finalizing everything in early May.
And I believe those plans were all dropped off in person today with hard copies as well.
Okay.
That's all I had. Just an update. Again, if there's any questions or concerns, happy to go take, take those back. We want to, you know, give the opportunity, obviously.
Well, I'm curious. Does the guard shed have heat in it or?
Yes, ma'am.
Super.
Try not to freeze them out in the winter and also try to give a little cooling in the summer. Uh, we actually even is one as far, the, uh, the doors on the side. I call them the farmhouse door, right? Where it splits halfway. We're even looking at, could you put, should you put like a blast heater or something there for the winter because it is so cold out? So trying to make sure we give the person in there as much comfort as possible.
So the next step on this is a resolution?
Uh, I think we get the feedback from the TDE, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And we go through that process, and then after that, we'll meeting and then call for resolution if everything's going well.
If you guys wanted, you could call for a public hearing. We don't typically see a lot of input on GE, but it's a site plan review, so that's discretionary to you guys.
Yeah, I think being consistent with what we've done in the past, even though that net is pretty wide, but doesn't get a lot of, um, I guess residents in attendance, I think it's still good to, to have the public hearing.
Okay, then, um, then.
We have to have the TDE comments first, right?
Yeah, yes. Well, I don't know. I would act. So it's not a subdivision, it's a site plan. I think that if you guys are comfortable with the idea of it, you could call for a public hearing now, get the public's comments. I don't think the engineering is going to change the plan substantially. If it does change the plan substantially, and you do hear comments related to that, then you could, you know, call for a second one, but if you don't call for one today, um, we should definitely call at the next meeting. Because we need that timeframe of holding the public hearing and listening to the public. I like to have it before we actually take action.
So that timeline would put us at the 21st, correct?
Of April.
April.
Yeah. So we could call for a public hearing at the 21st of April and hold it in May, or we could call for the public hearing today and hold it on the 21st of April. Either one would be okay.
I like having the TDE comments before we actually.
Yeah, and the other thing I was going to say is that next week, next week is off, so a lot of people wouldn't, if they had a comment, wouldn't have a chance.
And we balance those vacation weeks throughout the year, so, um, I think at least my position on this is that it's, it's a good application. Um, I'd be comfortable with calling for a resolution on the 21st, um, to hold a public hearing. And then, uh, gives us time to get the TDE, at least, you know, the initial steps going forward. And even if there's a draft response or something, we could take a look at that. We could always table that if we need to before that next meeting.
Yeah, um, we don't, uh, usually have a resolution calling for a public hearing for site plan. We always do them for subdivision because you do the secret determination at the same time. But that's not to say that we couldn't. We definitely could have a resolution call for a public hearing. If there's anything else we wanted to put in there, we could put it in at that time as well.
Did we do one for the direct air capture building?
Hmm, probably.
I recall we did.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that would be consistent.
Uh, yes. So I would say it's a gray area with GE when it was a really, when it's a really big building, when it's tall and it's needed an area variance. Well, actually, the direct air capture one, I think we allowed the zoning board to hold the public hearing because they have a mandatory one because it needed the, the variance. When it's smaller, um, things inside of GE that people can't see, we definitely do not always call for a public hearing.
Well, thoughts?
It, it's not small.
It's not yet.
And it's not internal. I mean, it's off, I mean, it's not affecting a lot of people given the site, but it's substantial.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with having the public hearing. I just don't want to go to the approval or not resolution.
Right.
Without having the TDE comments.
Okay, all right. So let's put that on for the, uh, April 21st meeting.
Yeah, I think that'll fit in the timeframe that we are looking at, no problem. So we can definitely do that.
Okay. That work for you?
That works. You need anything in particular from us?
Um, I don't think so at this time. We're, this package is pretty complete, so, uh, this package will amend the current drawing package that you dropped off, and so we'll collect that for the continual package that we'll start seeing in the future meetings.
Okay. And then comes up, you guys know how to get ahold of us. Appreciate everyone's time and effort here.
Okay.
Um, yeah, look forward to moving forward to the next steps.
All right, thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Uh, that was it for discussion items. We will move on to reports. Ms. Robertson?
So the first report I have is, I know that we just finished the short-term rental zoning code updates. Thank you, everyone, for, um, sticking with us through those. We have sent out the letters to all the short-term rental owners and are now working on enforcement and have moved the files over to the building department. That being said, um, there are a number of smaller zoning code updates that we had, but we weren't able to synergize them with the short-term rental timelines. And, um, we've also been having a variety of discussions, both with a couple parcels on, um, the Kelts Farm subdivision on River Road and some other places that Niskiuna does not have a lot of, um, early childcare, daycare centers, especially for the real young kids. And our code allows daycare centers in a shared building. It allows adult daycare in independent building. In, um, some zones, it allows daycare in a standalone building. But the places that they're needed, which is usually, uh, you know, the R1 zones, they're not allowing them as a standalone building. Still a special use permit. It would never be allowed to be a straight-up principal use, but, um, I think with what we have, and to be consistent, I don't know why we would allow adult, an adult daycare building in a standalone building and not a daycare, child daycare building as a standalone building. Um, and I think it's a detriment to our residents to not being allowing, um, to have daycare nearby. And the other consequence that comes from not having it in, as a special use permit in our code is that we get a lot of these ones that are exempt from our code because they're, um, daycare units that meet the New York State standard, which exempts them from the code. They become like family daycares. So we don't even get to review them, really. So, um, we just think that, uh, Clark and I's recommendation is that we open the zoning code back up with the intent of really looking at allowing standalone daycares in residential zones and exploring that. And then, um, a couple other little things which we've talked before, like we have some hardcoded fees that we need to update and take out and allow them to be set by resolution and stuff like that. If we're ready for another round.
No, the intent there is clear. Laura, could one of the differences between the adult daycare standalone versus child be actually that you'd expect an increase in traffic with the child daycare?
More than an adult daycare though, because, I mean, an adult, it's essentially almost the exact same pattern, right? Because you drop, we're not talking about overnight. We're talking about when you drop your, your mom off in the morning and then you pick her up on your way home from work. I know my, my mom used to bring my grandmother to an adult daycare. She loved it.
Okay, so that's not.
Yeah, I mean, possibly, I don't, I mean, it doesn't seem, I mean, maybe they're less noisy, but I think as long as it's a special use permit, um, you know, you can really look at those things.
And this would be an R1, any R1?
So I think we should look at all the zones carefully and look, but yeah, I would say probably anywhere that we have that inconsistency in the zone where it's allowed in a, you know, it's allowed in a shared building and the adult daycare is allowed in a standalone building, but we don't allow child daycare in a standalone building. We should look at those zones and see if it could work.
Yeah. I'm all for it. Probably a little bit to understand maybe what the reasoning was, if identifiable.
Well, I mean, I almost wonder if it was mostly people weren't building standalone buildings for childcare when we were doing those zoning code amendments. They were just coexisting in the churches. And the need has become greater, but I don't know because I'm not sure.
Does, uh, Mr. Basalian still control that property?
Yeah, and one of the, you know, we, we have actually been kicking around this a lot because we've had a coup, this come up a couple of times, but one of the big, um, incentives is that the two lots in the Kelts Farm subdivision that are actually on River Road, kind of a difficult place to put single-family homes, really good place to put a child daycare.
Sure.
So that's one of the things we're looking at.
Actually, I think the opposite, but I think it's a great location for a home if I were in the market.
Really?
I'd be very interested, yeah. Even though my beloved recycling and transfer station won't be operating, it's still a great location.
I mean, I like anywhere in Niskiuna pretty much.
You, there's a lot of wildlife still in the area.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So, so we'll bring back a sample, we'll bring back the codes as outlined and come back with a list for the next meeting that we can be looking at, if that sounds good to you guys.
I don't know if it's something for this board to deal with or not, but what about light trespass from properties? I mean, I've got one that's a street over.
So in our planning and zoning code, in chapter 20 zoning, we do have lighting guidelines. They aren't set in stone, really. Um, and I would have to, me and Rob would have to look at it. I'm not sure if they apply to residential properties. The property maintenance code of New York State and of our, you know, that we've adopted has a provision for unreasonable glare from adjacent.
Yeah.
It doesn't have like an actual like lighting threshold or anything like that. Unreasonable glare is subjective. Sometimes it's been a different call, it's been a di- difficult call sometimes to adopt. Typically, if we do get that complaint, the building inspector can go out, and if the fixture is movable and it's like pointing like right up, they'll try and have them pointed down and work with the people, but it's, it's a kind of a tough property maintenance standard. We could certainly look at it, but I don't think the way we have written the zoning code doesn't, that, I'll have to double check, but I think that chapter is just for development that I know of, unless anybody else knows differently.
I know in the past, the town has talked to a few property owners about how the, their, really their front yard lighting was so intense that it was going across the street, and they did get it toned down.
Well, and I know the CAC.
I don't know if that was just the power of persuasion.
Maybe the CAC has brought up though, like we got a lot of comments, like kind of complaints after Rivers ledge went up that their lighting was just too bright. Even though we actually had them put in direct lighting and had them lower the lighting fixtures and everything. Um, yeah, I mean, lighting definitely impacts, definitely impacts things. We could look at that, too.
Yeah, I think it's worthwhile to delve into that because with the advent of the newer types LED lights that are out there on the market, they're easily adaptable to renovation projects. There's a lot of controls that you can get with them. They're queued up to your Bluetooth, and some of them are pretty cheap that you can, you know, dot the outside of a house pretty easily and pretty quickly and light it up. There's a couple in neighborhoods that have done that with some renovations, and you notice them at night.
Yeah, you go out to look at a meteor shower or something and that glaring light from across, you know, this next street over.
Well, Dave's Hot Chicken is a good example because they wanted an entire LED band at the top of the, top of the building. So this is definitely a trend that we're seeing in construction and design, and I, it's spilling over into residential, residential.
Yeah, and right now their guidelines, I mean, we can pull that chapter up and take a look at it and actually make recommendations for that, for there to be some hard lines in the sand on those.
It's a shame we don't have a volunteer lighting expert like we used to.
Yeah, so the volunteer lighting expert that used to work with Kathy, my understanding, is the person that wrote that code.
Probably it was Hal.
Yeah, I think it was. Yeah.
It was wonderful.
Yeah.
Actually, Laura, can I go back to the child daycare? Just one quick question there. As we go through that process, then we will be open to someone could actually take a single-family home and then convert that into a child daycare, commercial operation, right? That's one of the consequences of.
It's something that we'd have to look at. I mean, that's what we struggled with with 929 Pierce Road, right? A little bit. Yeah, so we, we should really dive into all of those thoughts. But again, a special use permit, it's allowable use, but with a higher level of review, so.
Right.
I mean, we can.
Yeah, I mean, I wasn't necessarily talking about demolition. They could actually just take an existing single-family home and convert it. Once, once it, once it meets the state standard.
If it becomes allowable use, we would still decide on whether that location, that structure, that parking.
But they actually do that now under the state code, and they have zero planning board review.
Yeah, no.
And I believe if we adopt a code, um, I'd have to double check that. If, if we would then be able to look at those ones when they come through or not.
So are you talking about a building and edifice that's dedicated to being just a daycare or the ones, or the ones where it's kind of like a home daycare where someone lives there, but, you know, kids come, two or three or four or five kids come during the day?
Yeah. Those are home daycares.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we'd have to distinguish.
Yeah, we'd have to figure that out.
It'll be cool when we get there.
Yeah.
We'll have an interesting discussion.
Good point, though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm good.
Yeah, it might not be as easy as one might think.
Yeah, it's true. I think it's a worthy cause, though, to start figuring out.
I agree.
I agree.
We, we agree there. We just need to make it work well.
Yeah. Okay, so the next up item I have is 2339 Troy's Connected E Road. I'm just keeping you guys up to date. I mentioned this at our last meeting. 2339 Troy's Connected E Road is on the agenda for the zoning board. It is not a planning board review at this time. It is just a code interpretation appeal. They didn't submit any appeals together, um, so there's no air variance or use variance going to them at all. It's just a code interpretation. They do not agree with the town's determination that a use variance is required. So they're going to the zoning board, and the zoning board will weigh in on that issue only. What the zoning board decides will actually not change the process too much with you guys because what the zoning board decides will guide, you know, how they then come to you and get the referral. But you guys will still be looking at the site plan like you always would. Um, and you would still be doing a referral to the zoning board on the variances, once it's determined which variances are required.
Fresh my memories. This is Harry's.
This is Harry's. Yeah, sorry.
We didn't have to bring it up last time because I think the meeting was running a little bit long, but I guess I can ask it now. So the fundamental, there's a couple of fundamental issues. One of them is this 10% cap on growth.
Um, yes, the 10% cap, I believe, because of a prior zoning board determination, um, is considered an area variance.
Right.
The town considers the addition, expansion, formal blessing of the convenience store to be a use variance because, you know, we've reviewed all the different, um, documentation in our files, and, um, as far as we can tell, it never had any formal approval as a convenience store. So we feel that if that's actually going to be part of the plan there, that, that that's what triggers a use variance.
So the ZBA interpretation matter is only for that convenience store use variance. It's not addressing that 10% cap on the area.
Well, correct, so.
We don't know what.
For sure, it's, for sure, it'll always need an area variance. They're not disputing the need for an area variance. It'll always need an area. They're just disputing whether or not it needs a use variance. The use variance has got a much higher threshold of burden of proof for the applicant, so I think when they were discussing, you know, how to move forward, they decided that they wanted a true determination from the zoning board on whether or not a use variance is required. They don't agree with my interpretation. So it doesn't get a referral to the planning board because it's just a code interpretation. It will come back to you guys for an area or use variance referral after, after it's decided.
I can't anticipate where they're going with this, meaning if the convenience store approval was reinterpreted for mix, you know, additional use, they still only have 10% to play with for growth.
Wait, no, they're going to have to go to the zoning board regardless. Like this doesn't take away their case to the zoning board. They're just determining which applications they're using when they go.
Put the 10% completely in the.
Convenience.
In the convenience store.
Got it.
And that increase the repair shop aspect. I mean, 10% on a convenience store would be fairly significant.
Yeah, I mean, they actually haven't come back to you guys since you said, show us what 10% looks like.
Yeah.
They did bring it to the CAC, so we did see what 10% looks like, but they haven't gone back to you guys to show you guys what it would look like, partly, I think, because they were working the internal channels of town to see if a use variance was truly required, and we determined that it was, and they didn't agree, so now they're going to the zoning board.
Okay.
Yeah, we should, we should encourage applicants that, you know, the pla, the package that we see is the one that gets disseminated to the other committees, not some of the other stuff.
So, so there was a package with 10% presented to the CAC?
Yeah.
So is that a public meeting that we have access to?
Yeah, we can, we can always get access to that, but that's just a little bit out of step with what we typically do.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And we want to try to keep.
Yeah, I don't, we shouldn't go looking for it.
You know, there may be takeaways from our discussion points where they're working on something, and then there's a subsequent meeting. That one happened pretty quickly.
Yeah, I mean, um, the CAC only meets once a month, and sometimes it, it will actually determine the planning board's timeline. So I think occasionally if the planning board's like, we need to see this, and it goes to CAC, and then you get your recommendation, it's not a big deal. But it was unusual in this case because you said, we need to see this. They went to the CAC as their next step, and then they didn't come back to you guys and haven't come back to you guys, actually. So that's an unusual, um, occurrence of events. Um, and I actually think it wasn't in the planning board packet. He brought the hard copy maps to the meeting. So, so does anybody have any questions on that?
No, thanks for the clarify.
Yeah, I'll give you an update on what's determined at the next meeting, too. And then the last one is, so this is what I mentioned. And then the last one is, so this is what I mentioned. The recommendation to the ZBA, we have seven cases going before the ZBA at the end of this month. We, we do need a referral from you guys on the Filmer Ave, Albany Ave lot line adjustment that we looked at. That was what was supposed to be the business item, I mixed the two of them up in my head. So, so at our next meeting, even though we haven't looked at it in a long time, go back in your packets, um, I think we decide, which meeting did I decide it was on? I'll send it to you.
January twenty-seventh?
January twenty-seventh is when we looked at it, it's, um, it's a lot line adjustment on the corner of Filmer and Albany, that one house faces Albany and one house faces Filmer. And the, um, Albany Street House has a yard that's like an L, and so it's L-shaped backyard, looks like the Filmer Ave's side yard, and they're adjusting the line, so. But it's so old and non-conforming that it has like a lot of variances that are needed. But I think in the end, it'll actually make the lots more conforming. So I'll, I'll lay all that out for you and have you be able to look at it at the next meeting, I apologize, it should have been on this meeting. But it'll still go to the ZBA in time.
Okay, here we see it.
Is, do you know if the January twenty-seventh layout is consistent with what they're asking?
Yeah, they haven't changed it, yeah.
And it'll require area variances from?
Area variances only, yeah. For, for instance, you go back and look at it, the, the sheds on each lot actually trespass onto the neighboring property. This line will put the sheds on the property, but because you're moving the line, the sheds now need a zero foot. You know, so, but it's better than them trespassing over the lines, they're just, you know, it's just a complicated matrix of variables. Yeah, it is, it's just very complicated when you're doing all the the measurements. And that's all I have, unless you guys have any questions for planning department updates. Oops.
Any other questions?
Training opportunities coming?
The.
I haven't seen any.
Okay.
There is one, but I was gonna wait my turn on commission business, but I can do it now.
Go for it.
Um, I by no means mean to make this any kind of busy work, so you have to tell me as a planning department if it can be done. But at some frequency, would planning department be able to update what the count of short-term rentals in the town is? Maybe once a year, once every six months?
Yeah, no, that, it isn't hard, I mean, I spent hours combing all the different sites, and I mailed out eight.
Are you, are you asking for permitted?
Yeah, yeah, so within our new code.
How many permits requested are?
That's how we're asking. Well, I'm just trying to get a track of the growth.
Yeah.
As we discussed, right?
Mm-hmm.
And it doesn't have to be an every meeting thing, for sure, but maybe once a quarter, once, you know.
Yeah, so we're reaching out to eight, we'll see how many of them do wanna register.
Okay.
Have, have we gotten any permits since we approved? Or the town approved the, um, code change?
So, um, you always have this big vision with your code, and then when the implementation hits the ground, there's something. And we talked about it a little, but I guess we never really, like, fully decided. When we went to implement it, things were already booked. So Elena reached out to the New York State Association of Towns Attorney to see what would happen when we implement the code. Are the existing rentals grandfathered in, so then we have some weekends that have rentals that have been booked, and then some weekends that had rentals that hadn't been booked, which will then have to meet the new code? Or can they all just meet the new code? So we had to do all this legal research and we finally decided that, um, they can all just meet the new code. But that does require the vast majority slash maybe all of them to have the existing rentals canceled. So then we, which we have heard can be a financial burden, because if you don't have a reason to cancel or you don't properly lay it out for Airbnb or whichever, or, you know, you're using, they will charge you for each one. So then we had to work with a couple of the companies to make sure that the adopted ordinance would be a valid reason for them to cancel. We wanted to have that path all laid out so that we could send out the resolutions and they could have all those steps. So we actually sent them out on April second.
Wow.
Yeah.
And there were, there were eight, you said?
And there were eight.
What's the status of Milton Keynes?
Uh, we have not heard back to them, they have to achieve compliance by April thirtieth.
And neighbors still complain, or?
The neighbors did complain about a rental at the be, the end of March, I believe. Um, and there is a rental or two in the month of April. Um, but we, and they have been coming in to talk to us fairly regularly, but they haven't dropped off any paperwork yet.
The owners or the neighbors?
The owners.
Okay. Thank you. Alright.
Okay, moving on to commission business, uh, any items from board members? I had a couple of quick things. So, um, the economic development committee meetings are actually pretty good, if you ever wanna scan through their agendas, they cover a quite pretty wide net of what we all do here at the town, so we give an update. Um, a couple interesting things, there's a sidewalk improvement project going on Palmer up to the Van Antwerp Middle School, which is kind of, yeah, and there's a couple others that are either in the works for design grants, Cornelius is one, I think, over by Birchwood, they're looking at doing one as, as well. So they're all pretty much, you know, connected to the schools in those areas, which, uh, which are gonna be really, really good improvements. And then, uh, Route Seven does have a safety committee that started, and Ms. Blavsky is our representative there on that board, so I know that that's something that does get a lot of attention, so if you, if you do hear from that, just please direct them back to the planning board, there's, you know, it's a very, very structured group of individuals that has a outline with an achievable goal, what they're looking at as far as the highway improvements there for a myriad of different things.
That's the grant that we got with, um, Federal Highways, actually, for a linkage study with the Capitol Region Transportation Council. And, um, we're hoping to have a website, I think, here within the next month that'll have the existing conditions. And then people can go on and start, um, reporting and looking at ideas and doing public feedback and all that stuff, so we can work on ideas. Make it a better place.
Um, okay, so what you said actually triggered something with me, and maybe Laura and Clark and I can give you an update. The Palmer sidewalk project, does it impact the, which side of the street?
Different block.
Different block.
Yeah, so it's between Grand Boulevard and Van Antwerp.
Okay, good, alright.
Middle school.
Perfect. Good, and for whatever it's worth, then Ms. Griffin did meet with Laura, myself, and Clark.
Oh.
To, you know, just kinda, she was able to get engineering drawings made by her surveyor. Um, that showed the details now of the variances and the lot, the lots that she's requesting in the subdivision. I think we did request that, you know, she put the house.
Footprint.
You know.
Definitely.
On the lot, so.
And driveway.
So it'll come back at some point, we'll see where it goes, but their comment made me remember that, so, thanks.
Alright, anything else? Okay, uh, call for a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Gold?
Second.
Second by Ms. Blavsky, all in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, meeting is adjourned at seven forty PM, thank you.
Yink, Clark.